I'd like to welcome everyone in our audience to Candidate Night for the town of Cordermadera, sponsored by the Cordermadera Chamber of Congress. I'd like to welcome everyone here at this beautiful new town hall, council chambers, and I'd like to welcome everybody at home. Please note, this is being recorded and it's being streamed live to whoever's watching it at home. And for those who aren't home tonight, they can watch it later. It's being recorded. So, welcome, everybody. We have three amazing candidates running for two seats at the Cordermadera Town Council: Jim Andrews, Fred Casilla, and Charlie Kirchner. And the way things will work tonight is we have, each candidate will make a two-minute introductory speech. Then we have predetermined questions, three questions that each candidate has been given a copy of, and each one will answer those questions. Then we received questions from the audience. We've received some already. And if any of you have questions tonight, you've got paper and pencil on your seats. Please write the questions down, give them to Julie. And we won't be able to get to all of them. And sometimes these questions are a duplicate of what's already been asked, but we'll sort through them. And so, we're going to ask each candidate the three predetermined questions. We'll ask questions, get questions from the audience. And we're going to alternate with the candidates. So, each one will get a chance. And if you have any questions that are specific to a particular candidate, we're not going to ask it. It really has to be a general question that's appropriate for all the candidates. So, we're going to start off by asking each of the three candidates to, we're going to start with Jim Andrews, to introduce themselves. And you'll have two minutes each to give us an introduction and tell us why you're running and why the town should vote for you. So, Jim, you're on.
Okay. About me. I'm a 35-year resident of Cordermadera, former mayor and council member. I'm very experienced analyzing the complex town issues and proposing feasible, practical solutions. Okay? I'm currently focused on the long-term livability of Cordermadera and the public character of Cordermadera. When I was on council and mayor, we reorganized town budgeting and financing for long-term sustainability and soundness. We went to two-year rolling budgets, long-term projections for revenue and expenditures. We also set up, using Measure F, a separate-funded capital budget, so that it's dedicated to capital projects such as flood control, disaster preparedness, roadway improvements, senior and youth services. Okay? Also, we restructured the town pension system so that it's sustainable over the long term without pension payments adversely affecting day-to-day services of the town. Okay? Also, the last year and a half, when I was on council and mayor, we prototyped the neighborhood chipper program, which helped residents in individual neighborhoods up in the hillsides to clear brush from their property. Okay? And during that 18-month period, we were averaging 1,100 cubic yards of chipped material coming off those hillsides. Okay? And then, sort of the last thing I was involved in is we restructured Park and Madera Center's bond issue and also rental stream, so that the rental income now is sufficient to pay the full cost of that service. So, in effect, our tenants are paying for the property for us.
Thank you, James. Okay, Fred, again, your two minutes.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Fred Casilla. I'm a longtime resident of Cordermadera. I first moved here in the 80s. It was a new house my grandfather had built up on Christmas Hill. He built it in the 50s, got married. We moved to the condos down by Pixley, and then eventually moved to the east side where we raised our daughter. I've been involved with town stuff since 2011 or so, when I was first on the Housing Element Task Force. A lot has changed in the last 10 years on the Housing Element. And then in 2015, I was appointed to the Park and Rec Commission, and I chaired that commission for about three years or so. And then after that, in 2020, I was elected or appointed to town council. On town council, I also serve on a variety of other boards, I'll say, Marin wildfire pretension, Central Marine Police, Ross Valley Paramedic Authority also. I'm also past president and current member of the Cordermadera Lions. I've volunteered at a number of different events throughout the years, coached my daughter's soccer teams, Saturday, thanks Pat, volunteered at Oktoberfest, which was a great event. So, I'm pretty much, I've been embedded in the community for a long time in a variety of ways. My career-wise, work-wise, I was a former federal thrift regulator in the 90s or so. And after that, I specialized in financial crimes risk management. And I'm currently retired. For me, I just want to focus on three priorities. One is ensure financial sustainability and create a culture from the council to the staff that we're looking at more financial planning and to the future. We're not just looking at budgets or numbers from year to year. This one's going to be tough for the next one. You should try to balance housing mandates, which those mandates are mandated by the state. We have no choice, while maintaining the small-town character of Cordermadera. Again, because these are mandates by the state, that one may be a little bit tougher to do. And the last thing is, I want to see if we can, we need to continue to focus on public safety. And that runs the gambit from making sure that Central Marine Police is fully staffed to Central Marine Fire, which is currently doing a deployment study and a facilities feasibility study, and also support the NRGs. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. Charlie?
Let's share a screen for a moment. It's Charlie. Nice meeting you. I'm here. I brought this picture too. This is my daughter Ella. There we go. Hi, sorry about that. My name's Charlie Kirchner. I'm here with my daughter Ella. Have her up on there for her bat mitzvah. I want to tell you why I'm running, tell you what I care about, and tell you why I'm asking for your vote. I'm running for one very simple reason, and it sounds funny, but graffiti. About two years ago, I tried to save the cinema down the way on in Cordermadera, Tamal Vista, and was putting together a group to save it as a nonprofit before a bunch of kids broke in and graffiti the entire screen, smashed the doors, and destroyed the space. At that point, it re-energized in me something that I had from my childhood, where I grew up in a neighborhood in Los Angeles with a lot of graffiti. And this is not Cordermadera. And so, I decided to start getting involved more. And the fact that today's happening on October 7th, there are two most important days in my life when it comes to my political activism. First was September 11th. My father was US Army. Both my grandfathers were US Army. My uncle and my aunt were US Army. And I was going to do national service out of college, ended up doing 10 years focused on Middle East peace, nonprofit fundraising, and community organizations. From there, when I started getting involved in my community, it was mostly my Jewish community. I'm a proud Jewish American. And October 7th today, a year ago, was a very difficult day for my community. And the amount of rallying that happened within my community and my neighbors to say, "We're standing with you," inspired me to get more involved locally. So, when my last offer to the cinema was rejected, and we say, "We can't do anything for you," there are three things that became very important to me. First is the resiliency of our local small businesses. And I can talk about that later during Q and A. But I think we need to shore up our small businesses and what the next few years is going to look like for them in counterpoint to our car dealerships and furniture stores. The second is, to Fred's point and the point we'll talk about, I believe we're going to be an interesting place over the next 10 years as we try to implement 750 housing units. That has a chance to increase our town population by up to 10%. I want to talk about what I think that could look like as a contribution to our community versus something we should be afraid of. And the last is, this is a great community. I want to take it from good to great. I want to bring more community art and public events and what I'm calling base hits to our community.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, we now have three questions that the candidates are aware of. And because we started with James with the introductions, we're going to start with Fred. We'll go to Fred, to Charlie, then to James, in that order. So, the first question, in your opinion, what are the most important issues facing Cordermadera? And how, as a council member, would you intend to address them? Fred?
Thank you. I'm going to focus on two things. One, you're going to see a common thing. One is, I go back to the financial status with Cordermadera. Everyone always says, "Well, Cordermadera is flush with money." We just did like a storm master plan. I think there's 6.5 million or so critically high projects. We did a park and rec master plan. That one shows deficiencies also. We have climate change projects, flood projects. We have all these projects, and it all adds up money-wise. So, we need to start doing more financial planning. So, some of the things I would propose, one thing I got staffed to do last year was to do five-year financial projections. There's a lot of assumptions built into those, but I think it's kind of a tale, and it'll show you where we could possibly be going money-wise. I think we should be going to a two-year budget. I think Jim mentioned we went to one that stopped, I think during COVID. So, we're back to one-year budgets. And again, we need to start looking at the future down the road, not doing year-by-year budget. I think we need to get quarterly budget reports as a council member, because this stuff should be tracked on a regular basis, so it doesn't slip through the cracks. The other thing also is that right now, we have a 20% reserve on our general fund. We need to bump that up to 25%. And I think we also need to use sales tax override money, restrict reserve for some of these projects. The other part is housing. I'm probably going to run out of time, sorry. Housing, the one thing that has me really worried, when you look at our housing element, there's a concentration of housing on Pfeiffer and Tamal Vista down there. We need to be proactive with services, police, fire, and also more in transit to get ahead of those, get ahead of those before those units come on board. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. Charlie, same question.
Thank you. If I think about Cordermadera as a business, and if I think about the purpose of the town council is to advise our professional staff, our firefighters, our police officers, our public servants, around how to best operate in a moving environment with a population that is diverse in a town of 10,000 people. It's about strategically thinking around how our community's involved, where we interface with our professionals, where we allow our professionals to do their job. As a council member, how do we ask the best questions to advance what are the priorities of our town? So, for those specific issues, I would say top of the list for me, you know, for the last 10 years, after I left nonprofits management, I started working for fast-growth companies. In the last 10 years, I've worked with 12 nonprofits and Series A and Series B funded startups, run business divisions up to $65 million in revenue, worked with companies where we were bringing in $100 million a month. And I can tell you, from all that experience of working with businesses and consulting with businesses, the number-one thing is about where you put your money, how it teaches your priorities, and how you think about the next three years of where you're going to grow. When I look at the fact that right now, we have $25 million as our annual budget for this town, I'd like to look at ways in which we can use the resources of the town to work with real estate developers, to think thoughtfully around our type of housing, to work with our town council members, to think about how we can think about community engagement before we're doing the beginning of a project and get those projects landed as step-by-step implementation of a budget with community involvement.
Thank you, Charlie. And Jim?
My turn? Okay. I disagree slightly with, how do I put it? The town only has a budget, a revenue stream of about $25 to $27 million. With that money, 10 million is already dedicated to police and fire. Another six to seven is town staff. So, there's not a lot of spare cash in the budget. And if you look at the flood, the flood control plan that they recently had accepted, okay, it's $57 million that they're planning on spending in the next decade. Okay? We cannot afford to divert town revenue to lots of small projects like that, because we will end up like a town up in northern Marin County that funded a series of special projects, depleted their reserves, and now they're having sort of a fiscal crisis. This town already had its fiscal crisis. In 2010, 2011, we couldn't meet a bond payment without getting an emergency loan from a neighboring city. Okay? After that, we ended up laying off innumerable numbers of staff, and we're finally fully staffed, start doing the engineering we need to take care of our long-term environmental risks. So, anyway.
Thank you. Okay, our second question, and we're going to start with Charlie, is, "Cordermadera's sales tax generates a significant portion of the town's revenue for its operating and capital budgets each year. What, if anything, should the town do to ensure that Cordermadera maintains or strengthens its sales tax revenue?"
Great. I'll take that head-on with Jim said. So, having managed large budgets, from my experience, you're about 80% of your budget is going towards the fundamentals of what runs your business. So, I agree with you. Our police, our firefighters, our floodplain. I live on east side of Cordermadera. I have friends who live in the floodplain that are going to be affected by it. So, for me, I though look at that 10% of a budget can make an enormous difference in the quality of your company and the quality of your organization. So, when I look at the fact that an email went out to our community and says, "We have a surplus this year that is looking for designation." I went to a small business and said, "We can do matching grants of up to $50,000 for our local small businesses to make investments in capital and also make investments and improvements of their physical spaces." That is a diminutive amount to a town, but a huge amount of difference to a small business. If I went to an artist and said, "We want to be able to put art in our town," a $10,000 grant to an artist is life-changing, to then be in front of a town. My son won the Twin Cities Little League Championship this past year, and I can tell you, base hits add up. And for our town to make an investment of a couple hundred thousand dollars in our local small businesses with our sales tax, for us to be able to invest in what makes our community feel connected, to remove graffiti with volunteers being paid for graffiti removal chemicals, those little things make a huge difference in people walking around their town with great pride. And so, I want our dollars deployed in the ways it should be. I want my floodplain very well analyzed and executed on. I also want art in my streets, and I want my small businesses having new ovens if they need them.
Thank you, Charlie. Jim, same question.
Well, I guess I'm sort of a Johnny one-note, but the key thing we could do is make certain that the levee system and the pump stations can keep the east side of town dry. Okay? That way, we don't have to worry about our malls being flooded out. We don't have to worry about our auto dealerships being flooded out, since those are the two main sources of sales tax revenue. So, that, you know, I would just concentrate on taking care of fundamental business. And then, if that's fully funded, then we can think about doing additional projects or programs.
Thank you, Jim. And Fred, same question.
Thanks. I'm going to split this into two, because one of the questions, or part of the question is ensure that Cordermadera maintains or strains sales tax. Part of the sales tax, it's economy. It's economics-driven. If we get more shoppers coming into Cordermadera, then we'll get more sales tax revenue. It's my understanding, I've heard from a couple sources, we're getting people from San Francisco, the Marina, coming to shop over here, because if you think about it, there's no more downtown left. So, I think we're able to take advantage of that right now, but it doesn't mean it always keeps going up. The malls have done a great job drawing businesses in. We picked up Total Wines in last year or so, new furniture stores coming to town center, Rome Burgers just went in, and we're picking up another hotel, Evergreen, which is by Pete's Coffee down there. But again, it's economic-driven. What we can do, though, to help that process is, I think we can make the permit process for businesses a lot easier and a lot smoother, so that they're not hassled now, but it just makes it easier for them to deal with. We made a park that's permanent on the council this year, so that'll help Miki Square with Burma Town, Kiko's Tacos, and also Zin's Wine. Central Marine Police is running a pilot program for the next two years. They're getting license plate readers. There's a whole policy around that. But that'll hit on an alert if there's a car in our jurisdiction that was involved in a crime before. So, all that's going to help. The other thing is council members and also staff, we need to build relationships with business owners, because I think that goes a long ways. And the last thing we need to do also is we need to make sure that there's adequate funding for the chamber. The chamber's kind of like the boots on the ground out there, meeting with the business people every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, we have our third question. And if I'm doing this right, we're going to start with Jim. Your question is, "In your view, what makes Cordermadera special? Is there a particular project or proposal that you would like to see the town implement to retain or enhance that special quality?"
Okay. Well, the one thing I recall from when I first moved to Cordermadera, most of my neighbors, and I live in Madera Gardens, had originally bought their house when the subdivision was laid out. So, they were sort of original settlers. Okay? And what impressed me was that they were, you know, most of them were blue-collar workers, and they were very focused on getting things done. So, they told me about the rec center, which was built by the Lions Club, and basically the dads in town physically constructed it. Okay? We, 30, 40 years ago, the town flooded. Okay? They studied it, and then they came up with a plan to try and keep the town dry. We spent $30 million, back when that was real money, putting in a very extensive pumping system that has pretty well kept the town dry. What I'd like to see retained in this town is the can-do attitude when it comes to identify a project, figure out how to fund it or provide the resources to implement it, and then go forward. The other thing is, we need to remember that 20% of the town, it's 65 and older, and we have to resurrect the programs that we had prior to COVID to sort of work with them and make their lives easier. So.
Thank you, Jim. Fred, same question.
Thanks. I think what makes Cordermadera special, I think it's a sense of community, that people care about this community. You look at everybody here tonight, right? You look at like Oktoberfest, where it just wasn't, it was a Lions event. There was probably about 40 people, if not more, volunteering at that event. They weren't all Lions. They were from different parts of the community. You also have the NRGs, that you have people that sit on boards, Planning Commission, Park and Rec. They're all donating their time towards the town to make it better. And then we have organizations, again, more sense of community. We have the Beautification Committee to thank for the baskets that go around town. The Cordermadera Women's Club, they go to Casa Buena, the Department of Support of Housing, by Marin Joes on a monthly basis to support them. We have age-friendly Cordermadera. We have Patty and Carla here tonight. That, again, that's serving our seniors. We have the Lions Club, Oktoberfest, Crab Feet, a number of different events there. And then there's a community foundation that does summer concerts. You know, they do a lot of projects at the community center, including the back patio. That, to me, it's all a sense of community, if you think about. And that's not just one or two people. All those groups I just mentioned, it's many people. Some of them may have crossover, but it's many people. And again, it's that sense of community. Two projects I really want to see get done, one is the Intergenerational Center. I think the town has kind of been lagging on that project. I know it's come up, and it's on our radar, but we need to get that done, and that'll serve seniors. We had it pre-COVID, kind of went away. And last one is Miki Park Improvements. But there, I think we need to look at the bigger picture, Miki Park, including the businesses around there and the traffic and all that. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. Charlie?
I would say there's two things that make Cordermadera, in my mind, truly special. And also, I think there are two things that are very much at risk. My mother came from a very small town in Appalachia, Tennessee, Smoky Mountains. My dad came from Brooklyn. So, I've lived between big town and small town. I grew up in LA. What I love about Cordermadera is it is the smallest, most lovely town in one of the most metropolitan Bay Area cities in the entire world. Bay Area is truly unique, and we are the Florence, I keep saying, people of our generation. And I love being here in a small town where my wife grew up a mile and a half from where I live, that she can walk to her office. She works in maternal mental health. My daughter can ride her bike or walk from Hall Middle School to my office over in Tamal Vista. It's a small town. And I also love the fact that this is a multi-generational town. We just celebrated the Jewish New Year. We have three generations of families across, you know, four different families of 40 people. I have that every time I get into gather here in Cordermadera. When I'm at Town Park, I love that vibrancy. That's at risk. When we look at the fact that the majority of the housing that's designated in the housing element is in the whole area down off of MX1, where it's all our small businesses. I work in a building that's been designated for housing, where you've got groups and organizations like Andrew's Camps. Andrew's Camps is a foundational, most amazing part of our community, and if we're required to tear that down for housing, it changes the nature of our community. And the same is that my mother spent eight years, and I walked her home through memory care, dementia care, and hospice. So, I'm very thoughtful and sensitive around the type of senior housing that can come into our community, supported by individuals who don't have to drive an hour to be able to get here to support the citizens they're supporting.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, we're going to read our first question from the audience. And if I'm doing this right, Fred, it's going to go to you. And this is an interesting one.
I'll have you read it twice. Go ahead. I'm just kidding.
Okay. Wow. And looking at the audience, this is very interesting. "Do you support reopening the Alto Tunnel at a cost of $46.8 million? Do you believe reopening the tunnel is the best way to serve the bike and pedestrian community?"
Okay, so I'm going to be honest on this, and I'm pretty frank with stuff. I don't, I can't, I can't answer that, because I don't know if the $48 million number is correct. I've heard upwards of 60 or 100 million. I've also heard that there may be issues on the Mill Valley side, because of houses that are located above that tunnel, which could involve lawsuits. If that wasn't the case, and money was no object, then I'd sit there saying, "Yeah, I think it would be a great idea." But again, I think the money part comes into play a lot. And then again, I heard that there may be legal issues on the Mill Valley side. I think that's without, again, looking at anything else. I think what we can do is find alternatives, and people may not be hot on it, but Horse Hill, we're doing work now on Casa Buena. We're doing work on that street improvements. We're doing expanding the sidewalk, or putting in some bicycle lanes. That can hook into Mill Valley on the freeway side, the bicycle path right there. I think we need to start looking at alternatives. And the cost of this, it always jumps up. The county's looking at building housing, we'll pass, I still call it Larksburg Landing. It's country mark or whatever. They, some of that is affordable for teachers, for educators. That project was tagged at 100 million. I think last week, they came out saying it's 123 million. So, that just went up 25%. So, that's why, again, I'm not sure the number. But in a perfect world, if we had it all, then I'd sit there saying, "Yeah." But again, I think we should look at the alternatives. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. Charlie?
The answer is no. I'll be definitive about it. I've lived in Cordermadera almost 10 years, and I didn't even know there was an Alto Tunnel till 4th of July, and I saw them in the 4th of July parade. I walked up and said, "Explain to me." Being a biker, and I take the drive by Marin Joes at least once every two weeks to ride to Mill Valley. I love riding, and I love walking and running in our community. And the same way I talked about earlier about base hits versus home runs, if I were to, as a town, be advised to spend $40 million, I'd rather spend it on getting Higgins Landing open for craft for Hall and Redwood. I'd rather focus on micro-investments in our small business. I'd rather focus on Caltrans, figuring out the situation on Lucky Drive if we add 200 to 300 additional housing units. There's a lot of investments that need to be made around infrastructure that benefit a very wide community. And I believe that those investments make a big difference when you engage a community saying, "What's the wider range of things that you can evolve with in public-private partnerships and philanthropic partnerships and otherwise?" But to that end, if the Alto community, the Friends of Alto, raise enough money, I'll be the first person with a pickaxe to help open it. But in terms of investment of town dollars, not the best investment, in my opinion.
And Jim?
You said a guesstimate of 48 million to bring it in?
46.8 million.
How much?
$46.8 million.
I don't believe that number. I think they're going to have to drill, re-bore that entire tunnel. Okay? And with that, you're going to have to figure out what to do with the debris that the boring machine kicks out. It will be loaded into heavy trucks, which will go down Tama Pias, pounding the hell out of our roadways for a couple of years. Okay? And at the end of the day, you'll have a hole under Alta Hill that I don't think very many people will use. Okay? The folks, the bicyclists I've seen on Camino Alto are in it for the endorphin rush going down that hill, you know? You know? And I've seen them. It's like, you know, they're sort of a joy in their face as they zip by you. But I can think of 49 things I'd rather spend the money on. You know, if you've got $46 million, give it to the town and we'll use it to pay for our new sewer system. We'll pay, use it to make a down payment on our flood control system. Okay. You know, there's lots of, you know, we can even use it to help pay for the over, the freeway over crossing. Okay. You know, it's just not a good use of the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, our next question, we're going to start with Charlie. Another one. What, what Corder Madera regulations or enforcements would you put in place to protect pedestrians and riders from e-bikes?
I just had this debate with my daughter last night, who is a Hall student, who also has a bike that is zipped by by these kids who are flying 30 plus miles per hour down the street without pedaling and flying in front of cars. I remember talking on this day as to the chief of police when we had a forum with them. And I said, what, what is your current challenges with policing? Number one for them is there's not enough police officers. And number two, the police officers we do have have to drive in a long distance. One drives in from Fairfield every day and every night to support us. So there is major issues of us having the foundational parts of security of our community handled. That being said, I did ask, are there junior programs for people who can volunteer? I would love to set up a speed trap right on the corner where there's the crosswalk between Redwood and between Magnolia and have a little camera saying, hey, we saw you speeding. And the police, and the head of the police was very clear, we can't give them tickets. They can't be deputized to give tickets. Said, that's okay. I want them to be clearly shown their photos every time and showing the amount of speed they're driving. There's a certain level of civility that happens when you engage as a community. But I think it's a huge problem. I, I have a friend whose daughter was hit because she wasn't paying attention. It's a very different thing when you're riding a road bike 15 miles an hour and I love riding my road bike. But when you're a kid riding 30 miles per hour without a helmet on with a kid sitting on the back of the little bike without a helmet on too, that's not how we function as a town and not just our police's problem.
Thank you, Charlie. Jim?
I'm not certain what we can do legally. I do know that having once been a young boy, young boys do lots of stupid things. And the e-bicyclists are doing lots of stupid things. And if you call them on it and you're a grown up, it's amazing what can come out of a little kid's mouth, you know? So unless we want to have the police actively go out with speed guns ticketing kids. And if the kid's, you know, underage, not wearing a helmet, perhaps they can seize the bike as evidence. But, you know, basically we need the parents to keep their kids under control. I'm sorry, you know? So anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Jim. And Fred?
Yeah, yeah, I think for me, those things scare me because we walk a lot and I've been on bicycle paths and they just come zipping by and I know it's one step to the left or to the right, I would get nailed or my wife would get hit. And our dog would, again, is just, they're scary. Chief Norton though is on the cutting edge. He's trying to do as much as he can from a police standpoint. His hands are tied though, from a legal standpoint. They can't just pull kids over because they can pull them over if they're running stop signs and that kind of stuff. But they're not, central government police, they're not on bicycle paths, patrolling bicycle paths. They just don't have the staffing to do that. But he is doing a thing where he set up a registration program with Redwood with Hall. He also extended that out into San Anselmo and also one of the schools in Fairfax. And when I was talking to superintendent of schools for Larkspur Corder Madera School District, they actually have booted, they call them booting, like, you know, you boot your cars when you get too many tickets. They've actually booted bicycles. So again, at least they're making progress. Yeah, it's funny, but it works, right? To do that, I think we need to do a lot more education and not educating the, it's education of the kids. But I think we need to educate the parents because I think it starts with the parents because the parents probably have no idea what the kids are doing with those bikes. So I think we just really need to hit education hard. I think there's a couple of bills also pending in the state legislative regarding e-bikes. And then just one last thing, there's one manufacturer, which I can't remember the name of it, but I think we, Corder Madera Town, through our mayor sent a letter because this manufacturer, you can actually tweak the bike to make them go faster. So legally it's an e-bike, but you can tweak it to increase the speed. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, the next question, and we're going to start with, with Jim. We got two similar questions. I'm going to try and meld them together. It says, how much housing is too much? Can Corder Madera satisfactorily welcome another 700 to 900 homes? What about the impact on schools and infrastructure and water supply? And basically, and the second question is, what is your position on these houses? Would you like to see them be built? So, so Jim, basically we want to hear your opinion about housing.
Okay. Well, as Fred mentioned, we are sort of locked in by policies and rules and ordinances written in Sacramento. We have a housing element that was approved by the, what is it, HCD? So we then had to zone that property to, so that they could implement what we did with our arena numbers. I would like to see the water district seriously look at all this proposed new development and tell us where in a normal drought year, the water will come from. And then if they can't tell us that, deny, deny them new hookups for those properties. Also, if it's a multi-unit building, I want a separate water meter on every unit. So that, you know, there's not one of these, you know, I remember when Wind Cup came online. We were in the middle of a drought and we were told we had to cut back 10% when they had a couple of hundred units coming online just down the street. That's, you know, and then in terms of the schools, what folks forget is 25% of town park belongs to the school district. So if they have to build lots of new classrooms, we're going to lose a good portion of town park. So I think we have to do everything we can to sort of restrain the construction of a lot of high density housing here in town. But.
Thank you, Jim.
You know, once again, we are limited by the Sacramento's rules. So.
Thank you, Jim. Fred, same question.
Thanks. I think our housing number is 752 units. I think that's over the next eight years or so. And again, like Jim mentioned, it's mandated by the state. We have no choice. We tried to appeal that number. It was a five-minute presentation and A-BAG said, no, that's your number. We have to deal with it. On one hand, we're fortunate because we have large enough sites. We have Macy's is a potential, and I say potential, it doesn't mean housing will ever get built because you have to have a developer that's going to come in and they're going to pencil out numbers. And if the numbers don't work for them, they're not going to build it. But Macy's a potential site. We had somebody just submitted application for Hunt Plaza across from Joanne's. They went for, there's bonus densities involved with this also, if you build affordable housing. They were looking at 240 units of senior affordable housing. SF Fitness is a site, Big Five is a site and there's a Barcelaro, there's another store behind there. All those are sites. And that's what I mentioned before, I'm just worried because we haven't, we can't really control that if somebody comes in, especially if they build affordable housing. We can't, we can control it to a certain degree, but not a lot, that we're going to get killed in that area with high density housing. Going back to the thing I mentioned before, we need to be proactive in the infrastructure part. We need to reach out to the schools before these, any housing units come online. We need to reach out, figure out, well, police, fire, and also park and rec services is another one that people don't think about a lot of times. And the last part also is that we look at senior affordable housing. We need to look at workforce housing, both for our police, fire and our teachers. And also we have people that work in our malls and work locally, small businesses also. We need to figure out the workforce house part also. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. And Charlie?
This is probably the issue I'm most passionate about. Five years ago, I got recruited by a property management company that took over 5,000 luxury apartment units in seven cities. My job was to launch 1,000 of them as furnished apartments in a span of 18 months, two weeks before shelter and place started. So I have a very interesting view on how you add housing, how you deal with housing. The majority of our residents were tax, sorry, rent burdened. So when I look at our town right now, there are six of the 10 sites that have been designated in the housing element are all at the end of MX1. So the mixed use line of Tumble Vista from where we are sitting here, all the way down to the end where Larkspur is, six out of 10. One of them, I had a two-year negotiation with the property owner to tell you very quickly that cannot and will not ever be affordable at the price that they have set. And they're allowed to set the price as a property owner. The further down you go, the more complicated it is because those are small businesses with high density next to, next to single family homes. Then we get all the way to the end and lucky, you've got belt partners already there. And you also have the busiest intersection, if you are trying to drive between 7:30 in the morning and 8:30 in the morning, coming in and out of the schools because there's a single lane going that way. No matter how you slice it, the next four years are probably going to be the most important for the council to go bit by bit. How do we think through all the different elements to have housing go in there? How do we maintain the flexibility? So if 300 units do go in as a first move into us meeting our housing element, we're not locked into any specific type of housing that we can't sustain long term. I have a lot more on my website to go into that, but this is something I'm deeply passionate about.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, the next question, we're going to start with, with Fred. What ideas do you have to support older adults and fight ageism?
That's a good one. I actually sit on as a council liaison with age friendly Corder Madera, which again, it's Patty and Carla sitting here. I think, again, I mentioned before, we need to bring back the intergenerational center to support our seniors. I think that's, that's the first step. And after that, I think we need to support the programming that goes along with that. And that includes classes for, for our seniors. Right now, we do run a senior lunch program, I think, once a week or so at the community center. So I think we need to start doing more of that type of work with our seniors. Sorry, spaced out. I think the other thing that helps also is that this year, age friendly Corder Madera, they did a study, or I'm sorry, they did a survey of our seniors in Corder Madera. I think that survey was very telling and that dug into more than just park and rec programs. It also started getting into such elements, you know, are people living alone? There's people in this community that, that feel isolated in our community. I think we need to do more outreach to those people to make sure that they're being included and they feel that they're part of our community. There's just certain seniors that are just living by themselves and they're sheltered. And again, they're isolated. I'm sorry, I get choked up with some of this stuff. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Charlie?
Fred, I'm with you. It's, in the last five years, I've walked home four family members with dementia. My mother, my mother graduated UC Berkeley in her BA of Fine Arts at 62 years old. It's her gift to herself from her 55th birthday, said, I'm going to finally get my bachelor's. A year and a half later, the isolation and stress of life from being an older adult who does not have a saving account led to early onset dementia. Isolation of our community, any age over 55, particularly when there is more and more ageism in companies, is a mental health, physical health, financial risk and community risk globally. And particularly in America where there's isolation of seniors, some of that being driven by our decisions on housing, where seniors live here and everyone else lives there. You go to Europe, they're hybrid communities. They're vibrant communities. So places like the intergenerational center where you bring it together, not being saying, here's where bingo night is, but here's where all coming together and celebrating as a community, like Oktoberfest. I loved Oktoberfest this weekend. That's a representation of how we merge. And that's frankly, the main reason why I tried to open the cinema. I wanted doors open at 5 o'clock, seniors are free, coffee is free and wifi is free. Come in and see a movie. Because those things that knit together the fabric of a community around people in physical places with something to do, someone to connect to and stories to share. We lose those places when we allow places like the cinema to fall into disrepair and we start isolating our seniors in different parts of our town.
Thank you, Charlie. And James?
Yes. I have to confess, I was disappointed to hear that the intergenerational center has sort of, when COVID came, it went away and it has never really come back. So I hope we can get it reinstated. Also, I remember back in 2019, 2020, a lot of the older retirees were having difficulty clearing the brush off their property. You know, they just physically could not do it. And the town was able to work with them to get the brush cleared. I would like to see that program reinstituted so that we actually, instead of writing citations to people, we work with them to solve the brush problem. So that, that's it.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, next question, we're going to start with, with you, Charlie. And I'm going to combine two questions. There's three altogether here. What are your main concerns about Corder Madera? What worries you? What worries you must, what worries you most about our town? And what are the major unmet needs of Corder Madera?
Right. It's going to show a photo, but you can come find me afterwards. And I grew up in a town in LA halfway between Anheuser Busch Factory and the LA Wash, next to a town called Pacquima and a little town called Arlita, where everyone on my street had a trade. There were carpenters, electricians and plumbers. When graffiti started showing up in my town growing up, that's when I got politically involved. I was younger than Ella, my daughter over here. I was in fifth grade and graffiti started showing up in my neighborhood. And my dad went involved with the local member of Congress and we organized a town cleanup. That's how I got involved. We organized every small business to contribute one day of their time, the street sweepers, the paint store and everyone else. And we cleaned up that entire town in two days. So when I've started slowly looking, and I take photos here and there of every bit of graffiti I've started seeing showing up, if you're driving from the north, south, you see a nice little graffiti tag on our town sign, Corder Madera. You go to the cinema and you see graffiti regularly. There's still a piece of graffiti that says, rich people rule. The fabric of a community like Corder Madera that has the beauty and diversity of ourselves, that worries me. Because it's teens who are not engaged, who don't care because they just want to do it for a reason they don't understand. So bringing together our community, getting our kids involved in volunteering, getting our town involved with getting paint and putting it on there, that's important to me. And to that end, I think we have to live by our example of how we do it. So my campaign signs, which launched this week, are all paint based. So they can be reused and put back into our community and not in our landfills. Because that's a problem for me. If we living our values, we have to see it out in the community.
Thank you, Charlie. James?
Yes. I guess what I do is I look at Corder Madera, which is four square miles, one of which is bay waters. And the remaining three square miles, half of it is in a flood plain and a half of it is in a wildfire, urban interface wildfire zone. So I think the chief risk the town has is environmental and we have to be very proactive to address those possible risks and realize that it's not 50 years down the road that it could happen. It could happen this Christmas. Okay. If you look at what happened with Asheville recently, 1916, they had a tremendous flood. They forgot about it. Okay. They now have had another flood. Okay. Corder Madera, we've had a number of floods here in town. In California, in 1862, the entire Central Valley was underwater. Governor-elect Stanford had to get it to his inauguration by rowboat. Okay. So I definitely think that we need to be concentrating on mitigating environmental risks to the extent we can with the budget we have available. So that's it.
Thank you, James.
Can you repeat the last part of the question? And you can, if you speak into the microphone too?
I didn't catch it.
What are your main concerns about Corder Madera? What worries you most about our town? And what are the major unmet needs of Corder Madera?
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks. I'll do the worry one because that resonates more with me. What I worry about most is evacuation if there's an emergency. Christmas Tree Hill really has me worried because there's only one way in and one way out, Christmas Tree Hill. And when you come down, okay, you're hitting a stoplight and you're hitting Magnolia. And if you have a fire that reaches into Larkspur, Magnolia is going to be all backed up. Same thing in Chapman Hill, you can have people coming down and there's more multiple exits there. But same thing, everybody's going to be flooded onto Tama Pius Drive. And everybody just thinks fire on this side, potential fire on the other side, if you're Upper Granada and that part. And there's also the potential for flooding that you have to warn people. And again, same thing when there's flooding, there's only one way in potentially, or two ways in. You either go Tiburon or you go back to Cortimadera. Some of the thing that helps me with the evacuation part set, part is, again, I sit on Marin Wildfire Prevention Agency. They purchased AI software, which the county's Office of Emergency Management is starting to use. That AI software goes back and has data like the last 10 years for traffic data. So if there is an emergency, they can pull up data, they know traffic patterns, they know where schools are at. So that would help us. So that relieves me a little bit. But again, that's the thing I worry about most is evacuation. And just knock on wood that it never happens. And Marin Wildfire Prevention, again, they're doing a lot of work doing shaded fuel breaks, vegetation management, the town's doing vegetation. All that helps. But again, it just takes a strong wind, the weather conditions are right, and something sweeps over from Tam. Thanks.
Okay, everyone, we're at the point of our program tonight where we are going to have our concluding remarks by each candidate. Jim, we're going to start with you. Each of you have
I can't hear you.
Let me try again. We're we are at the point of the evening where we're going to the three candidates are going to give us their closing remarks. Each of you have two minutes to sum up, say whatever you want about about tonight, about your feelings. Jim, we're going to start with you. You have two minutes, then Fred, then Charlie.
Okay. I guess if elected to council again, I'm going to concentrate on maintaining sound and disciplined fiscal policies. So we can preserve the services through good and bad, through good and bad economies. Okay? Secondly, I want to optimize, invest in our flood control system and other required capital projects. Okay? Third is fire prevention. You know, we really need to refocus on clearing the brush in and around town. Okay? And then lastly, I just want to maintain the small town character if we can. I know we've mentioned Hunt Plaza area where they want to put in housing. As I recall, Lucky Drive there floods often. Okay? So I want to know how that developer is going to assist us in dealing with the flooding in and around Lucky Drive. Okay? So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Fred?
Thanks. I had a whole list of why I'm qualified. I'm not going to go through the list because I think I am qualified. I've actually done the job for like the last four years and it's actually four years plus eight months because we moved up, we moved back the election cycle. So I got an extra eight months. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, if you ask my wife. Just kidding. But I think I'm more than qualified for the job. I really love this town. And I just want to see, I just try to do the best for what's the, for what's best for the residents and what's best for the town. I'm very good at assessing risks. I'm very good at identifying trends, patterns. The one thing that's helped me in the last four years is by sitting on a number of boards, I've been able to collaborate with other town council members from either, not just Larkspur, Catherine Way's here, not just Larkspur, but also, you know, Ross, Tiburon, Seraphel, some of the bigger ones. I sit on Marin Transit Board. So there I'm collaborating with the Board of Supervisors. So I've built up those relationships and it really helps. I've had council members from other towns that have called me sitting there saying, hey, you guys did your park and rec master plan. What did that look like? Or I can leverage off them. And that's getting, that that knowledge really helps apply to what we're doing here in Cortimadera a lot of times. I'm not afraid to hold people accountable. The town manager reports to us, believe it or not. I'm not afraid to hold people accountable and I believe in total open government and total transparency. If you ever look at any of our meetings, I probably ask the most questions. I have a very inquisitive mind. But I just like to ask questions and part of it, I think the public has a right to know some of these, some of these answers. The other thing to keep in mind also is that we also sit on sanitary district too. We just had to do a bomb measure. Your sewage rates are going up, by the way. There's plenty of notices that went out on that. It went through a whole public process and that's the other thing I brought up. It went through a whole legal process. So it's not like we just go, let's go raise rates. There's a process that that had to go through. But that mean, I wanted that to come out. So residents have an understanding of why we're doing something and we're just not shooting at the hip. So again, I just look forward to your vote and I look forward to serving Cortimadera for another four years. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. Charlie?
I am so supremely grateful for the process of having this as a democratic institution and doing what we're doing. It has been an absolute joy to sit with these two gentlemen talking about our town. Six months ago, I was not running for office and I made my wife promise 20 years ago, after I went into politics, I'd never run for elected office. And then six months ago, I came to town council and I gave public comment about the cinema. And I became supremely impressed with the people that make our town the way it is. So for me, I'm asking for your vote and your support and for you to spread the word because I believe that either of these two gentlemen will make amazing council members and already have been on the councils to support the foundations of what are make our town strong. And what I'm asking for, for your vote for me is to bring diversity. I have 20 years of leading organization, both as a professional and as a board member of nonprofits that build the fabric of our community. For 15 years, I've worked doing community organizing from local groups to federal lobbying missions. And for the last 10 years, I've worked in small businesses. In the last five years, I've been focused on housing and apartments. The range of things I've experienced in my career and in my life, on top of having two children in our schools, provides me a unique perspective that I think represents a very broad diversity of our town. And the second is I am deeply committed to the culture of our town. I want to see art in our public parks. I want to see artists feeling that this is open. I want to feel our small businesses can get that new loan to be able to make sure they can make improvements on their space. Those things make a difference in the culture of a town of maintaining the small businesses and the car dealerships. And there are people I've spoken to who are not in Cortimadera who say, oh, Cortimadera, where the malls are. And I keep going, we're not a drive-through town, even though I love Amy's and I eat there often. This is a town of people and culture and belief and community. And I want to bring that voice of a variety of different community organizations and groups, but also have a deep commitment to the brass tacks and foundations of how to run a business, the budget, the professionals, and every different aspect of what makes our town strong.
Thank you, Charlie.
Stan, can I just add one more thing? Could we just give a round of applause for Julie from the chamber for putting this together? And also for, I'm sorry, for Stan for moderating and also for Lorena for doing the timer. It's greatly appreciated.
Well, thank you. And while we're saying thank you, I think I can speak for everyone here tonight and everyone at home watching or who will be watching. I want to thank our three candidates and it's self-evident that that the voters of Cortimadera will have a very difficult choice. But they don't have a bad choice, you know, and these guys are great and and I'm always in awe, especially at a local level, to see people like, 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 like Jim and Fred and Charlie, who just want to give back to this community. We live and work in an amazing town. I got here in 1986 and I've loved every second that I've been here. And I'm in awe at the people who serve on our town council, our planning commission, the various boards. This isn't about power. This is about giving back to the community. And you see that in our town government, you see that in our business community, you see that in our residents. You guys are amazing, all of you, and you have a tough choice to make this year. So gentlemen, thank you for all that you do for us. I want to thank again Julie and Carla for all your efforts tonight. I want to thank the town staff for all of your efforts tonight. And I just, again, I want to thank all of you for making Cortimadera such an amazing community. And let's give everybody in the room a round of applause. Thank you, everybody. Our candidates have, I believe, will stick around for a few minutes afterwards and the the formal portion of tonight's program is concluded, but please, if you have any questions that didn't get answered, our candidates are here to talk to you. So thank you, everybody.